Good evening. I would like to call the City of Mount Vernon City Council Meeting for June 28, 2023 to order. The time is now 7:00 PM. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item C is our roll call of council members. I'll ask the part to please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Councilmember Brocksmith?
Is Zook excused tonight? Sorry.
Councilmember Correia?
Here.
Councilmember Hudson?
Here.
Councilmember Holst?
Here.
Councilmember Molinar?
Here.
Councilmember Morales?
I believe is on our Zoom tonight. Councilmember Morales, can you hear us? Peter, do you want to?
He appears to be on here.
Okay. Can you just let me know if he pops on? Okay, thank you. All right. Under Community Comments tonight, item one is a review of emails from the public. I'll ask staff if there were any emails received to communitycomments@mountvernonwa.gov.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, council. You had no emails this time.
All right, thank you. Item two is public comments for those who may be in the audience tonight. Is there any public comment from the audience? You're welcome to step to the podium at this time. All right, seeing none, we'll move along. We have a consent agenda tonight. On our consent agenda, it's items A, B, and C. That is our regular council meeting minutes, our payroll checks, wire transfers, and claims.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
One motion by Melissa, second by Iris. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. All right, under Committee Reports tonight, item A is our Finance and Parks and Enrichment Services Committee. That's Councilmember Mary Hudson for her report.
Thank you, Mayor. With this, we met tonight at 6:00 in these chambers. Obviously, the first item up for our business is approval of our meeting minutes. Then we had a presentation by Finance Director Doug Valeski. Actually, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Erin Keeter, our HR Director, gave us a short presentation to council members regarding deferred compensation, retirement options for council members. Then we moved into Doug Valeski's report. The first item was an update on the Mount Vernon Library Commons budget. Pretty exciting news, I think. We are currently short in our project by $900,000. When you think of the scope of the project at $53 million, being short right now of funding, guaranteed funding of $900,000 is pretty monumental, in my opinion. We've got more opportunities out there and grants that have been applied for, so we feel pretty confident that we will have this project fully funded before its completion or before the end of the summer I'm going for. Next, we had an investment activity update. Currently, we have just under $50 million in investments in cash. Makes up about $34 million in long-term investments, 12.6 in short-term investments, and 3.2 million in cash. Doug also provided us a 10-year history of investment activity, which shows steady growth over the years, as well as a presentation of current and past interest rates. Then we talked about the sales tax, transportation benefit district, and REIT taxes. We have collected so far almost $4.8 million in sales tax through June. It's about $262,000 more than what was collected last year at this time. In our transportation benefit district, we are just over $1.1 million, which is about $60,000 over what we collected last year. And real estate excise tax collections total about $859,000, which is about $82,000 over last year's collections. So it's all good news. Miss Lanis, go to the order. We really didn't have much. We talked a little bit about some funding opportunities with the Library Commons project. We adjourned our meeting at 6:30.
Thank you, Mary. Next up is a committee report from our Development Services Committee. And punting for Councilmember Beaton is Councilmember Mark Holst.
Mark. Thank you. So the Development Services met on June 21, right here in council chambers. All council members were present with the exception of Councilmember Beaton, who was excused. We had a, really it was a pretty brief meeting. We had our interim director for Development Services, Pat Hayden, was giving us some updates. Oh, several months ago, council adopted a work plan, or what we call docketed items. Excuse me, Director Hayden gave us kind of an update on where we stand on those, who's doing those projects, staff or a third-party vendor, or what it's scheduled to do. Really, everything's on track with that regard. However, we did adopt three new, or excuse me, four new items to add to the docket this year. So staff's going to be busy. The first was non-conforming structures and uses. We have a number of residents in kind of the older parts of Mount Vernon. Anytime they want to do a remodel project at a deck, put a new roof on where the overhang's going to be a little bit further or lower down than it had been previously, they have to go through a process. Usually have to go before a hearings examiner. It has to come before council. We have to grant an exemption, basically. We're going to let that be an administrative process so that the process is much easier. Staff can look at it, see that it's a non-conforming structure, that this doesn't have any major impact on adjoining properties or easements, and they'll be able to do that administratively, saving the costs of a hearing examiner and the folks won't have to come to council to get approval for that. We had a discussion about a chicken code. Currently, chickens are allowed within the city limits of Mount Vernon, unlimited. We've had some folks that have come forward with some concerns. One in particular neighbor has 19 chickens. Two people live in the home, 19 chickens. We're doing some research on what's an acceptable amount of chickens in Siota City limits. We have looked, one of the things is that the chicken coops are limited in size to 36 square feet. That's by code, it's 36 square feet. We learned after extensive research by one of our staff members that each chicken requires 3.3 square feet to have a healthy, happy life. So those are just some things, the facts that came forward. We'll continue to work on that. But there'll probably be a limitation on the number of chickens that are allowed in a backyard. We also discussed doing a sub-area plan, and that was actually adopted and put on the docket. The riverfront where we built the flood wall, that area is all city-owned. That's going to be slated for redevelopment. We want to do a sub-area plan, see what best, what that property can best be suited for. Best way to do that is to go through a process where the public has input, council has input, and we're going to look at what's the best use for that property. So we've gone ahead and authorized a sub-area plan for that area. And, did I say something?
No, Kerry's.
And we'll be moving forward with that to look at what's the best use for that property. And then we had some technical codes that need to be cleaned up, and those items will be coming before council in the coming months. That was it. We adjourned at 7:10.
All right, great, thank you, Mark. Item B tonight is any council member comments. Any council member comments tonight? All right, seeing none. Under Mayor's report, first up, just a quick update on our Mount Vernon Library Commons project construction. If you haven't been downtown, you will have not have seen the second deck four of the Commons. Now remember, we've got two more decks to go, so you can start understanding the gravity of how large the project is, how exciting the project is. It's coming along nicely, so there'll be continued rebar installation, as well as mechanical and electrical roughing and activities. They're in progress, and so we'll keep going up. One thing that I was able to do, last week, I attended the Association of Washington Cities Conference, and I was asked to give a presentation about this project and how we were able to put it together. So that's exciting. We were also selected this morning to be a focus of a national conference presentation in Houston in the fall around the environmental energy efficiency of the project. So that's great. I think we're doing such wonderful things that get to serve as examples to the rest of our state and country. Next up, under Mayor's report, I'm going to ask Police Chief Chris Kamik if he doesn't mind coming forward. We have just a wonderful person and activities to celebrate tonight. We have Kat Boynton here from Kat's West Side Stories, and I'm going to ask Chief Kamik to take it from here.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good evening, council, and good evening to the entourage that's here with Kat tonight. I think you fill the entire council chambers, which is great. As you all know, we strive to create a hometown atmosphere here in Mount Vernon. And as city staff, you know, we work hard to try to achieve that goal. But really, at the end of the day, it doesn't happen unless our community members themselves feel it and they believe it. And so we're here tonight because we felt that in West Mount Vernon, and through the work of officers who are working over there, code enforcement officers, city staff, but most importantly, a key business owner over there. And so with me tonight is Officers John Gerondale and Alex Elwell. They are the zone officers that are assigned to West Mount Vernon, and then Community Service Officer Adam Walker, who covers the entire city, but predominantly he does focus on South Mount Vernon. And they've been doing a lot of work the last couple of years in West Mount Vernon and have worked very closely with Kat. And I'd like to invite John to come forward and speak to that.
Good evening. I just wrote down a few words on behalf of Officer Elwell and Community Service Officer Walker about our work with Kat. We've had the opportunity to work with Kat the past few years on a number of West Mount Vernon neighborhood crime prevention and beautification projects, ranging from block wash meetings to removing overgrown vegetation, weeding and spreading beauty bark in the public sidewalk planters along West Division Street, and most recently, working with us, the police and the Parks Department, on designing a mural that will be painted by children at the Edgewater Family Night Activities and displayed in the neighborhood. Kat truly cares about the West Mount Vernon neighborhood and is a fantastic advocate for the residents, businesses, and people of West Mount Vernon. Kat is extremely compassionate person who is more concerned about finding solutions to community problems than repeatedly complaining that nothing is being done and blaming others. It's not uncommon for Kat to have a table outside her business with clothes and food for people going through difficult times. Kat wants to be a part of a solution and understands it takes many stakeholders to address neighborhood problems. Kat does not give up if only one or two people respond to the neighborhood emails, flyers, social media posts that she puts together about upcoming activities. Kat is always looking forward to planning the next project once the current one's completed. Kat understands that effective neighborhood problem solving can take time and is typically a messy process and not a one-and-done weekend activity. Kat has been a tremendous partner in reducing crime and disorder in West Mount Vernon, and, you know, I've worked here for 24 years, and Kat is super unique. And her involvement in the community, wanting to make the community a better place, and she's just been fantastic to work with. So, thanks.
Absolutely. So maybe if I could, if I could invite the mayor to come down. And Kat, if you would come up, and Officer Elwell, Community Service Officer Adam Walker, Lieutenant Shackleton, and maybe I could have you out here so they could see you on TV really well. That's just what you want, right up there. And I'm going to read this, then we'll come present it to you. But it says, "In grateful appreciation of your dedication and support to the Mount Vernon Police Department and the citizens of Mount Vernon," we present this to you, Kat Boynton. So, thank you.
Okay. First of all, I hate being the center of attention, regardless of what you all believe, but I do appreciate this. And it wouldn't have started without Shaq. He's just sitting down taking a seat, trying to get out of the spotlight, I get that. It took a while for Alex to come see me. He was probably terrified of me. I don't know why. But having a leader like Chris is very, very important in this community. If we're not together, we're not anything. We won't be community. You have been a huge spotlight here. You have not said no to one thing that I've said. Doesn't matter how crazy it is, I appreciate you very much. And now to take all of the spotlight off me, Rob is going to come up here with me. We do things Kat's way. If you ever look at our menu or our signs, it's always our way. And Rob's half of Kat, so. I'm going to let him talk for a minute.
So, we brought our own award with us? I think I speak for Kat and I both to say that we both don't really like to receive awards. It's kind of weird. But this is cool, because it means that what we're doing is working, and that sometimes awards say a lot more about the person giving, or the community giving the award than the people receiving it. And so it is cool that, you know, it's going to seem making a difference. And as everybody knows, Mount Vernon is known for being the punk rock capital of the world. And a lot of you, a lot of you may be asking, how can you be saying that right now as you're accepting an award from the Mount Vernon Police Department? Well, I'm glad that you asked. So Kat, prior to her career as a superstar, she used to do a lot of gang mediation. And, you know, what she would do is invite kids over to her house, and even if they were from different gangs and stuff like that, they had to leave all their colors outside the door. And she created an environment where people from, you know, they could leave all that outside, even if just for a few moments, you know, or for an afternoon, they could come in and play video games together and put aside their differences. And I feel like that's a lot of what has, you know, what turned, it's really weird. Sorry, I'm going to like ramble, but it's really weird to think that like a dive bar would be an important place where these kind of life-changing scenarios, you know, kind of take place. But it's become an environment where people, where that exact thing happens, you know, where people leave either their political colors or their, you know. I mean, it's become a place where, you know, where you could, there's like a devout Christian and a self-proclaimed Satanist became best friends and work out together, you know, once a week. And that's the kind of stuff, you know, where you see people put those things aside and you see the good that can come out of it, you know, especially in a time when there is so much division and there's so many, there's so many scenarios where people are finding reasons to hate each other. There's a place where people are finding a lot of reasons to find commonality and find that the greater good, you know, like putting all that kind of stuff aside, that there's a lot of good that can come out of it. And we both grew up as skateboarders. Well, I could say we're still growing up, but.
I was still growing up.
Growing up, you know, that was back at that time, cops weren't good. They were mainly bad guys, and they treated, we got treated like criminals a lot of the time. And, you know, there were, it was, there were scenarios where, you know, you would get thrown down on the ground, like you robbed a bank or something like that. And so it kind of, you know, there was sort of a generation, I think, that came out of that that had this, you know, we listened to a lot of NWA and, and there's probably, there's probably, I don't know.
There's probably other words that came along with those songs. We won't say them.
What am I getting at? I'm kind of rambling.
Today's police officers.
Yeah, so, okay, yeah, so fast forward, fast forward to 2019, and all of a sudden, at a time when, you know, there is a lot of criticism of police in general, you know, and I can't, probably for a lot of good reasons, but that's, you know, here in Mount Vernon, look, we're like in our, Mount Vernon's a whole different planet. It's in its own world. But all of a sudden, I look on TV, and there are some Mount Vernon police officers demonstrating things to do that they encourage you to do during a pandemic. And one of those police officers rode a skateboard in the video and suggested that people go out and do this. And I kind of, my jaw dropped. And that was kind of the beginning of going like, it kind of brought it back to what, everything that we've been, you know, where it's like, you know, all these preconceived ideas of what you think a group of people is, or, you know, or any of that, it's like, you kind of have to break that down and go, we're all, we're all humans at some sort of level. And that became even more clear when, I mean, having police officers come down on the clock and also off of the clock, you know, on their own time as well, and contributing their own time and their own resources to just, to, I mean, we, you know, standing side by side with a police officer while we're cleaning up, that's really, that's really cool, I think, you know, and it.
As horrible as that sounds.
Yeah, I know, but it's a lot of, it's a lot of people coming together and setting aside a lot of differences and overcoming those boundaries for the greater good. And so we have a, I would consider this like a most improvement award that we are giving to the Mount Vernon Police Department. And, you know, there are some, I don't know all of you, but there are some members that I have gotten to know that are setting a very fine example. And we're really, we're really happy the way that it looks like things are going, you know. And I see, I see a lot of positive stuff, you know, coming out of that in the future.
We have your back like you have our back in this community.
Yeah, do you want to read it?
It says, "Kat's presented to the Mount Vernon Police Department officers, recognizing the ongoing effort to be better humans regardless of class, color, politics, or uniform. We truly appreciate you, the Kat and Rob show."
Awesome. Kat and all the friends and supporters, thank you from myself and from the city council. So, amazing. Thank you so much. All right. Next up, under Reports, is item D, which is our committee agenda request. Any committee agenda requests from council tonight? All right, moving along, there is no unfinished business. Item A, under New Business, is a public hearing regarding the 2024 to 2029 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program, or RTIP. So I think Bill Bullock, our city engineer, is coming up to present this particular item.
We got it? Thank you.
There you go. Thank you for all the help with that? All right.
Glad I brought jump drive. So, good evening, Mayor and council. So this is a presentation for the six-year TIP, for the public hearing we have to adopt the six-year TIP for 2024-2029. And so part of this is I'm going to go through a few slides about how we create the TIP, how you look at it, how you translate it. So basically, a TIP is updated and adopted every year as required by state statute. It outlines the current potential transportation needs for the next six years. And tip amendments may occur at any time. So if you have an emerging need or an opportunity that comes up, you always have the opportunity, basically, once a month, to amend a TIP to meet, to suit the city's needs. And so part of this, TIPs are required to receive state and federal grants as a requirement. They do reflect our regional projects for both SCOD as well as the state stip. And then the other piece is, is that with the TIP, we can show support for either neighboring jurisdictions for projects or for projects, for instance, Hickox Road Interchange is actually a state DOT project because it's an interchange in I-5, but it's something that is very important to us at some time in the future as well. So this is a list of TIP projects, barely fitted on the page, but the ones in bold and underlined are the first three years of the TIP that we have, and I'm going to give a project slide presentation on each one of those. The rest of them are on the remaining part of the tip, and if you have questions about any of those, I can answer questions about those kind of impromptu. Okay, so one of the things, do I have a mouse here or not? Okay, so just kind of, I needed a pointer. So this is a little bit about TIP forecasting. One of the things we do with the TIP, I have in here, I work with Doug on this, is I have this orange section. This is going to not work because it's really slow response on the mouse, I'm sorry. But part of what I do with the TIP, for every one of the projects I have to spend money on, I go through and I allocate how much REIT funding, transportation impact fee funding, and TBD funding we have, as well as grants and stormwater and some other things as well. And I try to balance those with what our funding balances. So I also get beginning funding balances for each one of these funds from Doug, and also what a rather conservative annual revenue stream is actually. We are spanning six years. And then is a combination potentially with a priority or understanding what rate we need to spend that fund in so I know I'm not overburdening any single fund in any single year. I do that for all six years. So that's part of the financial planning that we're supposed to do for a TIP. It's part of the resolution. And then, just as another piece, this, I won't go through this, but this is, I have a planning level estimate that I go through for every single project on the TIP, which gives me a pretty good level of confidence that I'm forecasting a proper amount of money for each project. So it's fairly detailed, what we do. And then, a little bit about TIP section breakdown. So on a transportation improvement program, the colors on my screen are a lot more brilliant than those colors, so I apologize. But the top four projects are citywide projects, and you're all familiar with those. Very typically, the one we exercise as our local street improvement program where we're doing our overlays and ADA improvements and whatnot, as well as our signal maintenance for maintaining our signals with our contract with WashDOT. Then the next piece in there, which is, I'll call it light orange on this, these are projects that are high priority to us. These three up here are associated with the Library Commons. Sometimes these are projects that aren't immediately funded. Library Commons happens to be under construction while we're doing this. But those are projects that we want to have kind of a higher level of focus, even though they may be planned in the future. And then the darker orange strip are the projects that we currently have funding on or are currently at some stage of construction or design. And then kind of the next section with the TIP, now we're moving out to the second to the third year. These next projects are kind of next on the list of the pool we're going to fund the following year as we complete projects. And then after that is more long-range projects and long-range planning. And then the purple section is really our, if you notice, planning, engineering, and construction are in the same year. Those are our long-range projects that we want to have a focus on this six-year. We're not necessarily likely to do them unless we have a particular opportunity or an earmark to do them with, in which case we do an amendment and move it up. But just as a little bit of a primer on how you look at a TIP and how it plans differently for transportation projects than the CIP does. And then a little bit, project planning and prioritization. When we consider street projects, one of the questions I get is how do you choose which street projects you're doing first? And these different lists of things, functional classification, whether it's from arterial or not, how much traffic we're carrying on it, what the collision rate is on that particular road, and do we have a countermeasure we can roll into a project to resolve those? Grant funding availability. Many times grant funding has a particular focus, so we sort of try to massage what projects we're gonna move forward in the near future based on funding availability. And sidewalk planning considerations, we've discussed these a little bit before, but when we're trying to decide gaps and, and how we're gonna do those sidewalk programs, those are the typical sidewalk-centric or pedestrian-centric. Most of them close a big gap. Freeway Drive was really the largest sidewalk gap we had in the city, and we completed that last year. So most of our TI, we have very few TIP projects that don't have any component of pedestrian or multimodal or transit in some way. So now getting into more of the project, any, I guess I'll just say, any questions on that at all? But there's kind of my primer on how we develop TIPs. So now getting in into the different projects. We don't really have specific slides on this, but we are citywide projects, so we have our local street improvements. This list, Digby Road, 15th in front of the hospital, and then what I call the roads surrounding the library. These are gonna be our paving program for next year. And on Kincaid, we'll go from first all the way to third and, and refurbish, uh, Kincaid Street in front. And then we have our typical citywide maintenance. In our sidewalk gap program and ADA program, we typically roll up into those, sections of sidewalk and ramps improvements that coincide with our paving program. But this next year coming up, one of the things we're gonna be doing that's key is finalizing our ADA transition program, which will give us more of a priority array, if you will, into specific sidewalk gaps and ADA transition elements. Beyond just what we do with paving. So running down the different six-year TIP projects, those top projects we have are the library commons projects for the, what we call the regional transportation supporting elements. So this is about half of the, of the library commons project. Again, it's a multi-use infrastructure. The regional transportation elements we have on here are, we're expanding the downtown parking, of course, but also the EV charging stations and that capability we're bringing to, um, the facility, uh, so close to I-5. And the other piece of it is its support as a park and ride for Skagit Station. Because that's, Skagit Station, of course, provides Skagit Transit, Greyhound Bus Service, and Amtrak as well. And being only a block and a half away, we can be overflow parking for that facility. And then we have two subset projects. We have the EV vehicle charging facility and also the EV charging bicycle facility. Uh, that's the, uh, next slide. But for this one, it's a, obviously a carbon reduction surface transportation block grant program uh, that we've applied for with SCOT. Uh, our EV charging station, 72 charging, basic level two charging stations, four rapid charging stations, and two ADA charging stations. Our total, uh, parking capacity should be, I, I think I'm right on this number. Sometimes it changes a little bit as we modify things, but 269 stalls. And will be the largest, largest charging facility on the I-5 corridor. And this is a picture of level two. So what you have is everything in red is a charging station. Okay, we have one ADA handicap charging station up in the upper right-hand corner and, uh, both, and then regular ADA parking lots in the upper left-hand corner. Both of those are located coincident to the elevators. And then in the bottom right-hand corner, you see, uh, five, excuse me, uh, blue squares. And those are our EV charging bicycle lockers on this level. So this is a typical layout of how our EV charging is arranged in our parking facility. And then the EV bicycle charging facility, the picture with the green arrow is a bicycle locker. So we have bicycle lockers because I guess EV bicycles get stolen pretty easily. So the idea is that if you're gonna charge your EV bicycle, you will put it in a locker and you kind of get a airport locker key for it, and then you come back for it when it's charged. But we have, uh, nine of these charging lockers going into our facility, and again, it is a part of the carbon reduction. Well, it's kind of hard to say. I would say it's a transportation-related carbon reduction because we actually have lots of carbon reduction in this building. So next project on the, uh, TIP is the 15th Street Sidewalk Improvements. This is a project we intended to do in-house. We still may do it in-house. But we're down to senior engineer, and so it'll kind of depend on whether Dean and I have the capacity to do it. Otherwise, we may go out and, um, bring this project out to a consultant to design. It is a fairly easy design to do. Basically, the east side of 15th Street in front of the hospital. And this picture's a good example where you see the wider sidewalk was done as a development requirement. And the existing sidewalk is about a foot to some places, a foot and a half narrower than where it should be. So this will basically bring this up to ADA standards and, uh, give us a sidewalk on both sides of the street. Riverside Drive Improvements, Project Two, and Riverside Drive One, which will be the next slide, is our, um, current under about 30% design. This will rehab the pavement on Riverside Drive from Skagit River Bridge. This one goes to College Way, and then the next project will go from College Way to Cedar Street, which is by the Truck Wagon. Uh, the biggest piece of this project is undergrounding all these utilities, PSC utilities, and getting rid of the ADA, uh, issues that are involved with those utilities. So it'll freshen up our corridor in the town by leaps and bounds, so I'm kind of excited about it. And here's Riverside Drive One. Basically, the same project. We are designing both of these at the same time for continuity, but we may phase, we'll probably phase the construction because the project's so large. 30th Street Improvements One, this goes from Paul Place, but basically one block past the Colson Trail, so we get a good, um, flight by the Colson Trail. But basically, Colson Trail to College Way, uh, this is a section where we really don't have, uh, very many pedestrian facilities. Uh, we also have periodic flooding in this area that kind of strains that community. So this will take care of the flooding, widen the road to a full multimodal, it will actually extend the bike ped path on Baker View Park all the way to College Way as part of this project. So, and add transit facilities at the Colson Trail end. Blackburn Extension Road. So this is, uh, a project that was, um, kind of in that last portion of the six-year for a while. What we've decided to do is, and this is a proposal or a conceptual proposal at this time, to potentially do a 30% design sooner rather than later, potentially next year. This is a little bit of a difference between the TIP and the tip. We move this forward in the tip, doesn't necessarily mean it gets funded in the CIP. Kind of depends on some decision-making that still needs to happen. But this is an arterial section, basically, associated with the Egomot PUD triggered by a certain level of development. They're supposed to build the. And this is a, gonna be a new arterial that basically parallels Second Street and provides that access to I-5. So this is kind of what GMA is all about. It's as you approach a capacity, you're supposed to build new roads above by parallel routes. So that's a good example of this. But the proposal to do, uh, 30% design potentially funded by the city is about $250,000. But part of what a 30% design does is give us a physical footprint on the, on the ground and a very good estimate on what it's gonna take for permitting. Because generally, you have ability to start into NEPA and SEPA after a 30% design. It also will give us kind of control of how we're gonna access, because right now it's just conceptual. And if you give it to the developer, you kind of don't know exactly where the alignment goes. But it allows us to plan the alignment, plan our utilities, plan where PSE is gonna go, those types of things, and plan how different properties can best access the road. So that would be some advantages of doing a, a 30% design now, gives us that predictability. But it's something that takes a lot of consideration because this really was due to be developer-driven. But putting yourself in the driver's seat, it has its benefits. And the other piece of this, in the six-year tip, you'll notice I have the, um, about a million dollars of additional design for a road this long in the next year. That's really a placeholder. If you do a 30% design next year, the continued design could be two, three, four years out, or it could be right away. It kind of depends on how things develop after that. But 30% is a good stopping place. Uh, Laventre Road Widening. This is a project that, um, is probably one of our top, uh, potential projects for TIB funding application this next year. This is a project that dovetails in with Hope Laventre Road Signal that we're installing at the current time. But basically rehabilitates the pavement. On the east side, we haven't had property to develop to create the pedestrian facilities at frontage improvements that are normally required. And it's been years since that's happened. So that's what this does. That gets rid of the ditch, widens the roads. We have a complete street standard and adds those pedestrian facilities as a connectivity. Lots of it between college, between the Sigmar Lane is where the college has their student housing. So between that and YMCA, we found gets a lot of traffic between those two. So there's some synergy there to, to, uh, proceed with a project like this. 13th and Broad Street Signal. This is a new signalization proposal that was, um, brought out to mitigate the increase of traffic with the new hospital facilities that are being built right now. And so as part of support for that, and we already have some developer contribution towards this project. Uh, but it looks like, I wouldn't necessarily say right away, but in a few years, we certainly could start triggering the need for a signal. And so that's what we're anticipating. River Dyke Trail System. This is a project we do have federal funding on, but we have actually, and this project will probably continue to get pushed out a bit because coordination right now, the Dyke District wants to raise that dyke to be three feet of free board above the 100-year flood plain like we have our flood wall. And so until they, and right now they're going through a very long permitting process to do that. And so until they get that work done, there's not really a good reason to put a brand-new trail on top of the dyke. So, so this one will, will continue to get pushed to the next year until we can dovetail and coordinate with the Dyke District. Uh, 30th Street Improvements Two. This is another, uh, project of value similar to the Laventre Road Project. So this goes from First Street south to the Menito neighborhood. So basically, you have this gap of sidewalk again, where you have a, a fairly well-rounded neighborhood to the south, both on 30th Street and Menito. And if they're trying to get to Baker View Park to play Little League, there is no sidewalk for about a quarter mile. And so that's basically what this does, is widen the road, add curb, uh, curb gutter and sidewalk for those pedestrian facilities, and upgrades that section of the road. And it's really the last section to get upgraded between Division and Fur. And the Fowler Road, uh, Fowler Trail Connection. So the Fowler Trail Project has been on the TIP for about 14 years now. And this is a project that basically makes a connecting trail behind Little Mountain Elementary School. We have a, a sewer line easement along there, so it's utilizing that easement. And then kind of zigzags a little bit past the plat, but tries to, uh, uh, provide some access, um, multimodal access to both Blackburn Road and, yeah, in theory, eventually to, uh, to Little Mountain. Because that's the connection it would make. Uh, and then this, of course, dovetails with the Blackburn Road Extension that we just talked about. And another project that is further out in the six-year to connect, uh, the section of 30th Street, that's the TO206. That's up there just to show it's, has synergy with another project on the six-year. So when that four-legged intersection, it's completed, this trail project provides all the access to that. And then our last project we'll talk about tonight. So the Colson Trail Safety Lighting Project was one, um, one of the first projects I did in the city, which was adding the street lights to Colson Trail between, um, Habitat from Humanity to 18th Street. So highly successful people, uh, we've had very good reviews of it. So I've added, um, three more phases of that to the six-year TIP. The reason why Phase Two is ahead of Phase Two, so Phase Two goes from 18th to Laventre. Phase Three goes from, this, this project goes from Laventre to, to 30th Street. And then Phase Four goes from 30th to WA. This particular section serves, uh, Laventre Middle School, uh, from, uh, basically, the neighborhoods on the east, a lot of them use, uh, Colson Trail to get to school. And in the winter months especially, they're walking to school in the dark. So this is designed to, and this will also have a series of light, the street lights in front of the middle, on the north side of the middle school as well. So this will serve to light that. We'll do this first. The other two projects are on the contingency list with SCOT. So, uh, like we've funded Freeway Drive and a couple other projects, if there's an obligation gap, we may do all three phases at once. It kind of depends when those things pop. And then we're back to our list. So that's the end of my presentation for the public hearing. I just have the list up. Uh, if there's any projects folks have questions about or would like to discuss.
Right, any questions for Bill before we open our public hearing regarding RTIP? All right. I think we, we hear about it a lot every year, so it's not like there's a lot of change, but we appreciate the briefing on it.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I'll open the, um, uh, public hearing regarding the adoption of our 2024 to 2029 six-year transportation improvement program. Would anyone like to speak? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. I did want to acknowledge that Councilmember Morales is on Zoom, so, um, Councilmember Morales, I can't see if you need to say anything, so just feel like you can chime in as needed. With that, any other questions for Bill? This is going to be a resolution. Uh, it would be Resolution 10039.
I'd just like to say, Bill, thank you for your presentation. I've sat through a lot of these presentations. It's probably the best one I've ever seen.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate you paying attention to those sidewalk gaps and, and getting those taken care of. It's always been a concern, and, and as our population grows and our kids are trying to get back and forth to Little League or school, it's important to have those, those paths or, and those sidewalks there. So really appreciate your focus on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I got one, just real quick.
Yeah, Gary, go.
It can be just yes or no to you. I think maybe you and Nigel were talking about the Riverside. Are they gonna put trees down the middle of that road?
Riverside Drive?
Yeah.
No.
No boulevards.
That's what I really thought would be amazing, but.
Right.
One of the problems with Riverside Drive is it's really designed for, um, not designed as a boulevard. And you could do it, but you cut off access to more than half the businesses along Riverside Drive, and that's where a piece of that is.
All right. If there aren't any questions, I would entertain a motion.
I would move the adoption of Resolution 1039 to adopt the six-year transportation improvement program.
All said and motion is to, uh, pass the water for lighting.
Well, right on.
Thank you. All right. That's, uh, then a motion by Mark and a second by Juan. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks so much. Thank you, Bill. All right. Item B tonight is another hearing. This will be a closed-record public hearing regarding Mount Vernon School District's Laventre Middle School Master Plan Approval. And Mary, uh, Mary Ann Manville Ailes from our Development Services Department is here to present this item, and Peter will help over some slides. It's a little bit of complication tonight.
The TV.
Here comes Alex. Here comes backup. There we go. All right. There we go. All right. Mary Ann, take it away.
It's almost like more work than it should have been. Good evening, Council Mayor. I am here tonight to present, I think it's a great segue that the last project that, that Bill talked about was the LaVenture Middle School sidewalk. And now we're going to talk about the LaVenture Middle School Master Plan Updates. So it was kind of, we, we planned it that way. So tonight, we're, we're looking for a, a motion to authorize the, the mayor to approve this. And what we're looking at is approximately eleven hundred square feet, one-story addition to the, the LaVenture Middle School. And it will include classrooms, offices, and support spaces that are needed by the Mount Vernon School District. And the east side of the, the property, the, the LaVenture Middle School property contains a wetland complex and a fish-bearing stream. So here is the entire site. We're going to toggle back and forth for a second between this. So you can see the, the new addition is down here, right in the, the corner. And if we go back to the other one, that is, that's, that's, it's added on right to this, to this piece right here. That's what we're looking at. And on the eighteenth of May, the hearing examiner held a public hearing and recommended to approve the, the application and the recommendation to council. And staff would recommend that you hold a closed-record public hearing and approve the resolution with the conditions that the hearing examiner also imposed. And applicant and school district and their consultant are here tonight. If you have any questions for them, if you have questions for me.
All right, so there is a more detail in the memo, is there any questions for Marianne on this particular item before we open the record? No questions, okay. It's usually pretty straightforward. I'll go ahead and open the closed-record public hearing regarding Mount Vernon School District's LaVenture Middle School Master Plan Approval. Is there anyone of record that is interested in speaking? And seeing none, we'll close the closed-record public hearing. I'll ask Councilmember Morales, any questions on this?
Apologies, couldn't get to the mute button on time. No questions on my part, thank you, Bill.
Thank you, all right. And I'll be looking for a motion for approval of Resolution ten forty.
We don't have any more questions, and I would like to authorize the mayor to sign the accompanying resolution approving the Mount Vernon School District for LaVenture School Master Plan. File number BLAN two-two dash zero six three zero.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Motion by Iris and a second by Gary. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Item C tonight is the approval of an agreement with Skagit PUD. Again, this is Bill Bullock, our city engineer, will lead us in this item.
That's the right page, so thank you, Mayor. So I'll just read the memo into the record. Attached to the Water Services Contract Drafted to Serve the Mount Vernon Library Commons Project with potable water for the Skagit PUD, or potable water from Skagit PUD. This is a standard contract to provide commercial water utility connection slash hookup fee and the monthly usage rate. The service development fee is forty-two thousand eight hundred and forty dollars, appropriate for a two-inch metered service that meets the calculated maximum daily demand and average usage for the Library Commons Building. This contract is required to service the building with an account from Skagit PUD for potable water. That was shorter than I remembered.
All right, any questions for Bill on this item, water service for a commons project?
I'd like to authorize the mayor to execute the water service contract with Skagit PUD for water for the Mount Vernon Library Commons Project.
Second. All right, thank you, motion by Marion, a second by Melissa. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. All right, and Item D is an approval of an agreement with Strider Construction, and it looks like Bill's here for this item too, Bill, go ahead.
The wastewater treatment plant influence pump station for IPS was constructed in nineteen eighty-eight and designed for a six million gallons per day capacity, or MGD. Currently, during peak, peak winter flows, these pumps are required to pump as much as twenty-four million gallons a day, which far exceeds the desirable range for their operating conditions. This results in excessive energy usage and accelerated wear on the piping. The upgrade to the IPS facility is, is essential to meeting the peak flow demand and eliminating the excess wear and tear on the existing pump facility during these peak flow periods. Three bids received on June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, ranging in price from two million six hundred and seventy-four thousand three hundred and four dollars to three million five hundred and fifty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-two dollars, with a low bid provided by Strider Construction, all within funding budget. The Strider Construction bid was responsive and prepared in accordance with the contract documents. Construction cost estimate for this project was three million six hundred dollars. Staff, I'm sorry. And then staff would recommend a motion authorizing the mayor to award the construction contract for the wastewater treatment plant influence pump station header upgrade to Strider Construction of Bellingham, ending up two million six hundred and seventy-four thousand three hundred and four dollars.
Any questions for Bill on this item?
And this is being funded through the Enterprise Fund pursuant.
That's what my understanding is.
So I would move the council through the agreement with Strider Construction.
Second. Great, thank you, a motion by Mark and a second by Melissa. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. Thank you for that, Bill, thank you, Gary Durant, our plant manager, for being here for that too. All right, we have completed our scheduled agenda items. I will ask our city attorney if he would please call for an executive session and give details as to why and the time needed.
I'd invite the mayor members of city council to enter into an executive session and discuss a legal counsel regarding enforcement actions, litigation, potential litigation, to which the city, the governing body, or member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding such discussions is likely to result in either adverse legal or financial consequence to the city. Pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty-one ten subsection one I, and moreover, to discuss issues related to collective bargaining sessions, which are exempt from the Open Public Meanings Act pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty-one forty subsection four. The time for executive session would be thirty minutes, we would reconvene after at approximately twenty-seven, with no final action after.
All right, thank you so much, we'll be then adjourned into an executive session at seven fifty-eight. Thanks. Juan, if you.